In that way, if somebody wanted to add something to the agenda that's not on there, it can be officially added.
Okay, you'll have to show me how to do that. We go over the agenda first?
So, no, so you'll do the roll call.
Mm-hmm.
And then you'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda, to make, to approve what it is, or if there's any amendments to the agenda.
Okay.
Now, you know, sometimes we add things at the end of the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
This would be the opportunity to get that officially on the agenda.
Okay.
Beforehand.
Okay, that's good.
All right, this time it looks like it's 6:00, so we're gonna go ahead and begin the meeting. Sorry, this is the, this is the June 28 Historic Preservation Commission meeting for the City of Monroe, call to order. Present, we have Laura Powell, myself, Elizabeth Jones, Jane Camp, Fay Rossi in attendance, and we have additionally, city staff Brad Callender and city planner Laura Wilson. Has everybody had a chance to review the meetings from last, last month? Do we have any changes or corrections to the previous month's minutes? Do we have a motion to approve as submitted? Motion by Jane Camp. Do we, do we have a second? Second by Fay. All in favor? Hey, we have something new tonight, we're gonna have an approval of the agenda. Has everybody had a chance to review the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion to approve the agenda by Fay, do we have a second? Second by Jane Camp. All in favor? Agenda is approved. And moving on down. Next thing, let's see. We have old business, Laura, does that look right, next thing on the list? All right. All right, see, the first thing we have on here, we have, let's see, Lori Volk was the, was here. We had a motion to table that last time.
Yes, and she emailed city staff a week ago and officially asked for it to be tabled again until the July meeting.
Okay, so we would need a motion to table that again until next month, is that correct?
That is correct, the July meeting date is the 26th.
Okay, well, we need to ask if there were any questions from the public first? No, okay. Do we have a motion to table that again?
Motion.
Okay, do we have a second? All right, second, motion-
Make sure y'all are speaking into the microphones pretty well.
Okay. Motion by Laura, second by Fay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion unanimously carries. All right, second item of business is signage for 106 South Broad Street. Go ahead and approach. Can you just speak into the microphone and just-
Good evening, we have requested permission to paint a mural on the side of our building.
Excuse me ma'am?
Yeah?
Could you, for the record, state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Heather Swanepoel with Rince Bath &amp; Body.
Thank you.
We're located at 106 South Broad Street.
South Broad?
Mm-hmm. It's the-
Oh, oh, I got you, right, okay, I'm with you now.
Are, the side of the building extends past the row, parallel to Spring Street? Do y'all have this?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. And what we would like to do is, everyone is always so infatuated with our story of how we started, and it was because I couldn't knit, and it's just, it is an anchor for the business, it's the anchor for what, I think the charm of, of what has taken us across the country. So, we are proposing adding our story to that very blank wall on the side of Spring Street. And it will be, we measure the wall as approximately 38 feet wide, 25 feet tall, and it'll be mostly font with some graphics mixed in to give it an element of whimsy and some interest as far as, like, there'll be a knitting yarn ball with knitting needles and a scarf rendition of the first scarf that actually started making soap. Our sprinter van, highlighting words that are super important to us and part of our core values, that we hire stay-at-home moms, that we make everything natural, and all that good stuff.
Is there anything else that you wanted to add?
Do you have any questions?
Um, I did have some notes here, we're gonna, we're gonna look at the zoning ordinance I know on this, and I did want to, before we got into a bunch of questions up here, I did want to note, the zoning ordinance states that the purpose of the historic district sign ordinance is to ensure the district signage is harmonious in proportion form, color, and materials to the character of the historic district. Visual relatedness is crucial to the goal of an integrated historic district, and signs play a key role in helping to preserve the historical district's sense of time and place and achieve the desired effect of charm and compatibility. The ordinance allows businesses to maintain their individual identities and also become identified with the downtown historic district as a whole. Signage shall, shall complement the architectural details of the building. Letters can be painted or mounted directly on a signboard, storefront wall, or window, if in proportion to the storefront. Lots in the historic district are allowed the same amount of signage as lots outside of the historic district, or greater if the form and scale of the historic character of the building or project so suggests. Inside the historic district, businesses may also utilize canopy signs, swinging or projected signs, menu signs, and sandwich signs. Acceptable lettering materials include wood, stone, synthetic stone, metal, vinyl, dimensional plastic, acrylic, or high-density polystyrene foam. The overall design of all signage shall be compatible with the historic district's overall character. And I think Fay, you had had something you wanted to-
Well, our problem is, we don't have a covenant for murals. And since yours is an advertisement with Rince, your company in it, it has to fall under wall signs. Okay? And that would mean, I'm on page 84 of our book that we have to go by, I got it. And it says that the wall sign shall not exceed one and one and a half square foot per linear foot of the building. And the total maximum for a single sign shall not exceed 75 square feet. And only one sign is allowed per wall. And if you look on, is it West Spring? Yes?
I'm not sure which, which ordinance you're referring to, you're right, the 75 square foot maximum has been removed, so it looks like you've got an older zoning ordinance copy. I've got a brand-new one right in front of me here.
I don't have a brand-new one, we'll just-
It's the same thing you just read, minus the 75 square foot max.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Right, but that's not in there now.
Oh, it's not in there.
No ma'am, but you were right about the other dimensions, about it being one and a half square foot per wall, linear foot of wall. And to, to your point, I've got it measured at 52 feet, which would allow you a 78-square-foot wall sign. Do you know the dimension of the sign proposed to the commission that you've drawn on your-
Oh, bigger than that.
Then, I mean, the ma, the max you would be allowed would be 78 square feet.
It's how much, did you say?
78 square feet.
78?
78, 'cause it's 52 feet-
Based on her size?
Based on the actual dimension of the wall that's facing Spring Street.
Okay.
And if I could, well, since I'm already talking about that, I will make one comment about that, is that, since you don't own the property that faces Spring Street, which is the row, the property next door, which is the row, there is harm that that person could erect a structure that would block your sign. Any sign that you put on this building wouldn't, you know, you technically don't face a road frontage on that wall, technically.
Right, right.
But visibly, I mean, you and I can go stand up there right now, we can see it, no doubt. So, if you were allowed one, I would think that if this commission permits it, that it'd stay within the parameters of the-
All right, and let me, let me ask you this, the one on West Spring, is it approximately this size that you're talking about? You know, the one with the mountains, that signage on the wall?
Uh, no.
It's smaller?
The one on West Spring, like, the one that's, oh, you mean the, the, the coffee shop? The coffee camper one?
Yes, yes.
Coffee, I, I would put it in the range of 50 to 70 square feet, somewhere in there, yeah, I would agree that that's-
To give you an idea of what we're talking about, in other words-
In fact, I think that used to be the rent sign, was in that exact location at one point.
In other words, it can't be the full building.
Okay.
And that's in a relationship about what space you would have.
If we were to remove our logos, and so there would be no logo or mention of Rince, would that take it away from the, needing the sign ordinance and put it into a mural?
There's, just so we're clear, there's no such thing as a mural, it's a wall sign as the, as it's defined in our ordinance.
Okay, so the-
So, if you put a message on a wall, it's called a wall sign, whether it's got, whether it's got graphic depictions in it or a message, it's gonna be treated as a wall sign, as far as that's concerned.
Okay, so all of the, and just, I'm not trying to split hairs, but just to make sure, so the big Monroe one on the side, coming this way, that's a wall sign?
That would be technically a wall sign, it was, I guess, done by the Downtown Development Authority.
Okay.
We didn't have anything to do with that. We don't know how that got up there.
There's a lot of those.
It didn't come before us.
Okay.
That was somebody over our head.
So, 78 square feet? And anything I want, within reason.
That's not obscene or profanity or those, the other limitations that are outlined in the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time.
Do we have any, well, do we have any questions from the public? Do we have a motion to approve as presented?
Have we approving it as a wall sign, or we can't approve it as she asked as a mural? We can't approve it as a mural?
And I think you're taking a vote on her, her submitting.
Do I?
I think you're taking a vote on what, exactly what she submitted to this commission for consideration. There's not, there hasn't been an alternative proposed to the commission. So, you're voting on what has been submitted to you.
Okay, so it's submitted as a mural?
Well, that, let's stop calling it a mural for a minute, it's, I mean, what she submitted, she has defined it as a mural in her application.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
But in nowhere in the ordinances of the City of Monroe, it's a wall sign, right.
Right, we know that.
So, what she submitted to you is, is basically a wall sign for your approval, and so you're voting on what she has submitted tonight. Which was the sign, which I don't think she had a dimension for that sign.
Would you like to see a smaller sign submitted and look at that?
If she, yeah, I mean, that's something you could consider as, let her submit an alternative to, that would meet the dimension, so that way you could vote on it in something appropriate, that would be comfortable with the commission.
You could table it until she brings a smaller-
Would that work for you, for us to table it and you come back with the right proportions and whatnot? Or a smaller sign, so we could see, you know, what you have in mind? Just shrinking that, it's not, for me, it wouldn't work.
Um, we can see what, we can definitely see what we, we can come up with. And just to, there are a lot of murals around town, I mean, the alleys have them, they're all over.
We understand that, but we don't have anything to do with that, that didn't come before us.
Is there, am I not in front of the right committee? I, I, not in a, not in a bad way, but-
We wish we knew.
Um, and we've, we've been approached for a different mural on our building, and I would like to save that gentleman a lot of time to let him know where, where he should go looking for a mural.
Just, just to help you with the word mural, I, I've looked at this issue, and I looked at your application, and I've had several people ask me about this, obviously, these signs were in town here before I came to work for the city, but when I read what a mural is in other jurisdictional definitions, not this jurisdiction's definitions, 'cause we have nothing like that that defines that. Something like the Welcome to Downtown Monroe is considered like an art, so when you say mural, that can be strictly graphic art. Yours has a specific message in it, and that is a very specific way to say that it's a sign. So, if you were just painting a, a picture of mountains and whatnot, I don't know that anyone in this city would be opposed to that, in any way, shape, or form. I think that's the way maybe the downtown one is considered, I don't know. So, when you say mural, I don't think signs, I don't think content with messages. I mean, just based on the, I have to look at it with blinders based on our limited code. And even if we were to introduce something like mural into our code, it's gonna fall under the definition, I guarantee you, of wall sign. 'Cause the city is gonna have their hands tied as to how they can, what parameters they can define those within, 'cause that's where the law is gonna keep us, is in a specific dimension. What am I, what am I signing, is it a wall that I'm signing, then it's a wall sign? Is it, is it a freestanding sign like at a street, like you see when you go down, you know, a freeway street? Then it's a, then it's a ground sign. That's, that's where the city has to be when it comes to defining what these things are. So, when you say mural, I think art, I think mountains, scenery, something nice, you know? But yours didn't quite fall into that, that sort of purview, even if I didn't have that in my ordinance.
So, if we came back with wanting to cover that wall with mountains?
Well-
Is that, would that be an option to bring, just so we don't waste our time, our, our designers' time recreating things?
Or if you're doing something that's praising Monroe, you know, something that's in keeping with the other signage, murals that we have in town, we would definitely consider it-
Okay.
More appropriate. Right.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Do we wanna table it then, till next?
Do you, do you wanna table it, or?
Uh, yes.
Do we have, do we have a motion?
Okay, I mean that we table this presentation until she can come back with something that meets our guidelines.
What is the date, what is the date for that?
And we can see that is in scale to the building.
So, your next meeting would be July 26th, or if you wanted two meetings out, that's August 23rd?
August.
August?
Do we have a motion by Fay? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, and a second by Laura? All right, all in favor? Unanim, any opposed, was unanimous? Okay, unanimous motion, motion carried. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you in August.
Thank you.
All right, third item of business, we have new construction, 1238 South Madison. Laura, do we wanna hear these together, the 1238 and 1240, or do we wanna do them separate?
You can hear them together, I just need separate motions.
We have 1238 and 1240 South Madison Avenue.
Good evening, my name is Lawrence Parker, and this is my wife Lisa, I'm the CEO of Regen Properties LLC. We submitted a application for a certificate of appropriateness for a new construction at 1238- Oh, we submitted a application for a certificate of appropriateness for the construction of a new home at 1238 South Madison.
Respectfully, from what I see, I've looked at from Q Public, the house that's on 1238 South Madison was, I think it was built in 1920, and it looks like it was 1,536 square feet, and I, I just feel like it's just got such a, a much smaller footprint, as do many of the houses in that neighborhood, and I think that these, these houses that you're wanting to build, they, they, from the plans, those have, what, three, 3,746 square feet apiece, correct? What was the square footage on those houses?
We're right at 2,000, this plan here says 2,100, and we-
But that doesn't include the, the, the additional spaces, the garage and the porches.
Oh, the carport.
The carport and the porches. So, altogether, it's 3,746 square feet, if you include the additional spaces. And that 3,746 square feet to replace 1,536 square feet, I think that that's really changing a footprint. And there are two-story houses replacing a one-story house, and I think that that just really doesn't blend in with the district, I mean-
Do you have anything to read on infill? I have a graph on infill, new construction.
I'll have to pull that up, go ahead and ask any questions that you might have Fay while I find that.
Now, if I could address that a little-
Yes, certainly.
The original house of the 1,600 square feet, it had a garage.
I can't hear you, you're tall, I know.
The original house with the 1,600 square feet, it had a garage, but it's already been removed.
Mm-hmm.
So, that probably would've factored into the square footage of the original house also.
Do you think it would've doubled it?
No. So, would you be able to give me a maximum allowable square footage?
I just think that when we look at these, when we look at the historic footprint, I just don't think it should change that drastically. I just think that you're, you're, it, it needs to resemble the historic footprint of what was there. I mean, what do y'all think?
Oh, I went all up and down that street, and there are single houses, cottages, there are a couple of craftsmen houses, there's only one two-story house, and it's way down at the other end of that. But almost everything is lower, and you're talking about putting two or three two-story houses that are bigger than the one that you tore down. They just don't fit, and they, they need to fit in the neighborhood.
The, the way that the current house is constructed, with the attic and the pitch of the roof, the new home is not much taller than the existing home.
But, but, but what you're showing are not the right style for Monroe, these are beach houses. They look great in Charleston.
Okay.
But it doesn't go with Monroe, Georgia.
Well, we have a few things here in the manual that talk about infill and, and recognizing basic design concepts in, in new, new, new constructions, and it talks about, define the area of influence, the area of influence will vary for different locations adjacent to a historic district, and so you're, you look at the area of influence around, you know, at the buildings that are around your, where you're gonna build. So, the zone of influence is important to define at the onset, to assure the proposed improvements, give appropriate consideration to the historic resources of the district. And so, we have some examples in the manual, and we can send these pages to you to look at if it would help. And so, then it talks about identifying historic context, and you wanna recognize and relate to the established configurations of lots and relationships of buildings, that lines to the orientation and setbacks. So, you're gonna look at a historic pattern of how all the buildings relate to one another. And you recognize basic design concepts, proportion, proportion is the ratio which relates dimensions of elements of a building, height, width, window size, roof pitch, et cetera, of buildings as a whole and to each other. So, you, you know, you wouldn't have a, a, a very large two-story building next, you know, where you never had those before in that area. Pattern is the arrangement of similar design elements in a regular and repetitive manner as an architectural expression. Patterns can be found in facades of individual buildings or in groups of buildings. So, you don't wanna change a pattern, you know, if you've got that district and it's, it's, it's all very similar, you wouldn't change the pattern by throwing something brand-new into the pattern, you know, because the district's gonna be very similar.
The, the house that you're talking about, that you're moving, has a very high pitch and has a second story, and that's great, we have no problem with that. Some of the houses are single-story, and that's okay too. But to do a complete, total, two-story house in that area, it's like a sore thumb.
Okay.
Okay?
So, I-
The other thing that we need from you, because we have to go by proportion and the size of the lot, is we need an in-scale plat that puts your proposed location of your building. But it needs to be in scale, so that we can-
So, just, just to be clear, so it's not the height of the building, it's just the fact that it's a two-story?
Well, and, and, and you know what, and Fay, maybe I'm wrong, and, 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 and correct me if I am, but I wouldn't even be so opposed, and if you're looking for more room, and I wouldn't even be totally against having more room, even as, in a separate outbuilding somewhere, if you really needed additional space, but I think it's just having that large of a structure, you know, when you didn't have that large of a structure straight up. But I could even see having a smaller structure and even a separate outbuilding on the same property, if it was a little bit smaller, I mean, could, could you-
Like for a garage?
Yeah, like that, because I just think it's having it all there, like, just because you never, you wouldn't have never had that.
Right.
And it's just in, 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 in that shape and form, and I just think it's just too much.
It is.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
It needs-
And we're willing to look at different plans with you, we have no problem with that.
Now, I brought a couple of pictures, can you take a, look at a couple and just tell me if you think, okay?
And we understand people that haven't done this, you know, for a living, are not gonna make your-
We wanna, we wanna work with you, we're, you know?
And we want to help you, we-
No, I understand completely. No, no, and, and it is just not for that area.
It is historical, but not for us.
Just not for that area, but it is historic.
Oh, it's a great one, I love it.
It is beautiful.
These are much better.
Okay.
Yeah. Like, this is, this is craftsmen, that's perfect. Yeah. You could do, well, you're just talking about to, to the upper level here.
Yeah, because we have some right up the street, at Davis, that new construction, those are like 18-
Yeah, I think you're okay on that, and the, and the style is perfect.
That's, yeah, that's-
The style is perfect. We don't bite.
I do like that, it's, what do you say? It's just a little bit, it's not, it's not just as grand and giant and, yeah.
But we still need to have a plat-
Okay.
And, and the position, so that we can check that it fits the, the lot.
That'd be great.
Now, before we can approve it, so we need, do you have a problem with us tabling it and you bringing that back next time?
Sure.
With the other papers?
Ms. Fay, are you okay with them submitting, they had a plat approved to, with them drawing on that plat, are you okay with that? They have an approved plat. And so, they have an approved plat.
The way the two lots on South Madison are, one is one-third and the other is two-thirds.
Yeah, we know.
With the new drawing, it makes them 50 and 50.
Okay.
So, therefore, it will be an equal-sized lot for 1238 and for 1240.
That's good.
Okay.
I think she's just asking that you represent the footprint on the plat, so they can, so they can see that.
That'd be great.
Sounds good.
Okay, so we'll-
Want to table it?
Table it, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so do we have, do we have a motion to table that? See, what, what, what date do we wanna table that till, to July or August? What, what works for you guys? July, okay. Do we have a motion to ta, do we need to say that, what date is that, Ellen?
25th.
26th.
26th, okay. Do we have a motion to table that till July 26th?
A motion.
You have a motion by Laura? We have a second by Jane, all in favor? All right, unanimous approval, with motion carried to table that till July twenty-sixth. Thank you, guys.
Are you also tabling the twelve forty?
Oh, yes, okay, wait, that was, we're tabling twelve thirty-eight till July twenty-sixth.
We actually should table both of them.
Wait, 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 we're going to have a second motion. Do we have a motion to table twelve forty until July twenty-sixth? Jane has motioned to table till twelve forty to July twenty-sixth. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Laura has seconded, all in favor? Unanimous vote to table twelve forty to July twenty-sixth. Thank you very much. Thank you, Laura. All right. Next item of business, um, let's see signage for one twenty-seven North Lumpkin Street. Long time no see.
Oh, I'm back. How are y'all?
Good, how are you doing?
It's okay. Yeah, so we, my name's Chris Collin. I'm with Strange Taco Bar and one twenty-seven, um, North Lumpkin LLC, which is applying for the, um, sign for Strange Taco. It's, um, you guys can see the dimensions hopefully on your drawing. It's actually smaller than what the size building will allow. Uh, it's being painted on, on the building directly onto the brick. And, um, it's being lit with, um, just regular downlights that there's, there should be a, a close-up of those in your packet, too. Also. You have any questions about the sign?
As an artist, I like your strange graphics.
Oh, thank you. We're really proud of it. We ju, we just actually did a logo refresh.
They say what they mean.
Yeah.
You know, you read it. I like that.
We didn't want anyone to think they were going to come in and just have normal tacos, so we were trying to just put that out there.
I like this. This goes, and this goes in along with the zoning ordinance.
And I think the main concern would be the lighting. We like the, that, that style lighting.
Right, yeah, it seems to be consistent with the downtown.
It shouldn't be a problem with your neighbors' residential.
No.
Because it's more concentrated.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. I, I do have a, a quick question just about y'all's thoughts on this. One of the things that we were looking at is actually sandblasting the brick on the front of the building because it had, somebody had, had gone through and like sponge-painted, uh, the brick that's on there. It was just something I thought I'd get y'all's opinion on.
I wouldn't, I'd be nervous about sandblasting the brick.
I noticed that the other day when I was by there and thought it did need to be cleaned up, but I'm not sure sandblasting, they have to, it needs to be really gently done.
Okay.
You'd be real gentle with it.
I think the sides of the buildings are kind of cool because it kind of tells a story of the, of what was there and how it used to be actually connected over to the Wayfair, but the front just has kind of spray, someone just took spray paint and sprayed it.
Yeah.
It, it may not be as obvious. If, if you're standing farther back, you can't tell it off, you really, I mean, I've spent hours staring at the building, so it kind of, to me, it stands out more. But, um, that's an interesting point about-
How much, how much of the paint is on there? I mean, how, how, how large a space is it?
It's the whole front of the building. It, well, you know, I, apparently, it's not that noticeable. I think it may be more noticeable. And, and if we paint this sign, I think a lot of people's visually are going to be drawn to the sign and maybe not look.
Be scared of damaging the brick.
Yeah. Uh, we would, we'd talk to somebody that, that does that professionally as far as building restoration goes, but, um, and it was, it was pretty expensive, so I actually kind of like the fact that you guys don't think it's a good idea because they'll save me some money, so we'll roll with that. Okay, well, that's it. Do you guys have any other questions? I'm glad you liked the fun. I was a little scared you guys were going to think it was weird.
I like it a lot.
Okay, all right, awesome.
Do we have any questions from the public? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve as presented?
I move we approve it as presented.
Okay, we have a motion from Fay, we have a second from Jane. All in favor? All right, unanimously approved.
All right, and I'll be back in a-
Thank you for making that street look nice.
It's going to be great. Once everything gets done, it's going to be beautiful. It's going to be really great. I'll be back in a minute. I'm helping out with the one thirty south, so I'll see you guys in just a second.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, sixth item of business. We have another signage here, let's see. Let's see. Oh, no, wait, this is, this is not signage. What is this? This is, um, nine oh four South Broad Street.
Good evening.
Hello.
I'm Leigh Malcolm, and I sent in my proposal. I think my graphics were self-explanatory. This is simply trying to increase the footprint of a little eight hundred and seventy-square-foot cottage. And it will give me the opportunity to turn this dwelling into a two-bedroom and still have a functional kitchen, laundry room, and bathroom. The only question I have is, I know I'm going back with six-over-six windows on the addition, but can they be vinyl clad? Okay, thank you. And I'm not intending to remove the existing windows unless we were to get into a problem on the back where the existing kitchen is, and in that event, I would go back with a six-over-six vinyl clad. That window looks a little iffy.
I, I move we accept it. I don't, um, you might have to wait to have questions, though.
Yeah, I think alterations should respect the integrity of the original structure, and I think this request does not hinder any historic integrity.
Very well presented.
It is very well presented. Does, do we have any questions from the public? Do we have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve it as presented.
Do we have a second? We have a motion to approve by Fay, we have a second from Jane. All in favor? We have unanimous approval, and the motion carries. Thank you. All right, our next item of business, we have detached garage for two eleven Boulevard.
Hello, I'm Shannon Sturgill, and this is my wife, Sarah. We bought the house at two eleven Boulevard, the one that was moved behind John's supermarket, and we are wanting to build a detached garage at that property. It's a thirty-five-by-fifty structure. It would go with the back line of the property, completely blocking the view of John's supermarket from Boulevard.
I went down and looked at that, and I asked the guy that was there, we needed, uh, a plat that was to scale.
I wish you would have asked that guy, or I wish you would have called me, and I could have met you over there.
Well, I didn't really know what I was looking at at the time, and he said that he had told you that you needed one, but that's neither here nor there.
Well, he's, he's my contractor. He, he doesn't advise me on that kind of stuff.
Well, we'll work with what we have, and I walked that property.
Yes, ma'am. And the, the three trees in the back would stay. All the trees would stay.
That's what he said.
Yeah, they'll, yeah, we're not going to remove any trees.
Trees, good, yeah.
You've done a great job.
Thank you very much.
Really have. I got a tour.
Thank you. Oh, okay, great, yes.
And I also drove around, and it, I really didn't think it was a detraction from the back, even in from John's parking in the back of that.
Right. It really blocks the view from Boulevard of his, all the mechanicals behind John's.
I had a little design suggestion to the, this.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I wondered what about doing a barrel vault for those, um, instead of the pointed roof, do the barrel to, it would kind of go with your front entrance, you know, the round part of your portico?
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe if you did a round, it would take away some of the harshness of the-
Well, I learned something doing that portico and the upper porch. When you do round, it adds more dollars, so, um, you know, we are at a point where we are concerned about price, too, so. Yes, ma'am. Yes, I understand, yes, ma'am.
You get rich, you know?
Yes, ma'am.
I just think it would make it a little bit more-
Yes, ma'am. I do like that idea, yes, ma'am.
I think you've done a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Be nice to block that view, too. I think it was being-
We love John's, so I don't want to, I mean, I want my direct-
I love John's, too, but I, I like that. It looks good.
Well, I think the proportion's good. If you tried to do a double carport as big as the house is, it would be lost. You really needed that size.
Yes, ma'am.
To do it. And y'all did a very good job presenting it and-
Thank you. And we'll be taking the driveway off the back, so we won't have two driveways off of Boulevard. Yes, ma'am.
On around, okay. I move that we accept it as proposed.
Do we have any more ques? Do we have any questions from the public? Fay, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I move that we accept it.
We have a motion to accept by Fay, do we have a second? We have a motion to second by Jane, all in favor? Unanimously, we've, it's accepted?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Motion carried. All right, our next item of business is, uh, request, I think it's a signage request for one thirty South Broad.
Hey, I'm back.
Hello again.
So I actually, I actually own the building, one thirty South Broad, and Joe Nedza, the proprietor, is, he already had a family vacation scheduled with his young family, so they're at the beach right now. But I also have Chelsea Ladd, who's going to be the general manager here, so she could answer any questions about the business that you guys had, if you'd like to ask her any questions about the business, but I, I'm pretty well-informed about the building and then the sign that they've submitted to you guys.
Is it just paint on the building?
Yes, ma'am. Also, yeah, similar to Strange Taco. It's actually the same Levi Deli. I don't know if you guys know him. He's painted, he did Silver Queen and, um, a lot of the murals actually around downtown area. And so he's a local artist, so he's painting their, their logo.
Looking at this.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
To me, there's a lot going on. I love what you did in yours.
The butcher block is coming off the front, if that makes it more simplistic.
But that whole thing, the whole signage, I think if you were to move breakfast, coffee, and donuts down to the bottom of the butcher block to the window.
Okay.
I think people could see it better. I'm an artist and interior designer, so I'm talking from a design standpoint. The, as they're walking, they would know what they're seeing, you know, what's inside, or if they're driving.
Okay.
The way your other sign was, it was "by," you know, it popped.
Yes, ma'am.
But this, to me, doesn't pop. It's too much, it's too busy, I think.
You've got so much white at the top.
Right.
It sort of fades away.
Right. The other thing that kind of bothers me is, I know we can't tell you what color to paint it, but this looks so beachy for a traditional city like Monroe. You know, like, the, the Blue Rooster could have painted their building blue.
Yes, ma'am.
But they didn't.
So Nedza's is an established business in downtown Athens, so he, he has an established restaurant, so they're not, they're, they're not working from a new palette. I mean, he has a logo designed, um, he has a color scheme, he has Pantone colors that he has picked out.
But hear me out now, just a minute.
Yes, ma'am. So I've, none of these-
The background was white or cream, and you used the blue and the pink as accents.
Right.
I think you would have a whole lot more impact.
I can't make any of those decisions for him. I, I came to basically speak on behalf of the size of the sign, that it was, it was applicable to the, the square footage of the building. So I can, I can pass along those comments. I actually had suggested the breakfast, coffee, and donuts go across the bottom of the windows. So I can suggest that to him. But I also know that he is on, um, you know, they're, they're scheduled to open the first of Aug, August, so tabling this, I don't think is something that he would be interested in doing. I could ask him, something I could suggest is that if the board could approve the Nedza's logo on there and table the other two, or table the breakfast, coffee, and donuts, that could be something that, um, he could come back.
Of those three windows.
I mean, I like it on the bottom of the windows because it keeps the window open, because I don't think you should block the light coming in to the restaurant either. I like the light. So at the bottom of the window, I have no problem with that.
To me, it's too big if they put the whole thing in like that.
I thought he was talking about the glass.
It would be better coming down, don't you think?
I, I think, that's a good point.
You think he'd like it on the glass?
If I measure that as one whole dimension, then it's going to exceed seventy-five.
Right.
You know, people see that as walking by with the Nedza's up top.
But the, the good thing about some of these-
Which windows, because there's four windows.
I know.
I mean, I, I would, I would break that up into two. I mean, he really gets one wall sign, but-
Right. We got a problem with this.
I don't, I mean, I don't really carry their weight.
Okay.
If he puts the, the-
Yeah.
It's only one by ten.
Down at the bottom, you can't, you're not allowed but one sign, but if you put it all in one, it's too big.
Okay.
And if, you can't have but one, so this would end up being two to get that first one small enough. So if you move the wordage down, the donuts and whatever it is, coffee, down on the window, it doesn't count.
Okay, so, um, Chelsea Ladd, who's here representing, said she could actually approve that that be changed so it doesn't have to be, come back, so where the Nedza's would stay up top and the verbiage would, would go down to the windows.
That would be good.
Good.
So, um, do I need to formally ask that and, um, or present that to you guys so you can vote on that?
We would need to put a motion for that?
They can put it in the motion.
Okay, all right. You know, I can, I know that the paint color doesn't have to come back before you guys, but I can share your thoughts with Mr. Nedza.
It's like green eggs and ham, you know what I mean?
You know, art is subjective, so.
Right, right, it is, yeah.
And, and speaking on the paint color, there might be a slight color problem with the printout that you have. I think the Nedza color is more like the color that's on the story shop. It's kind of a greenish.
It is a lighter, I don't know.
It's on the back of the wa, the building, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am, yeah, yeah.
It's on the back. I went by and saw it.
Yep.
Not nice.
Okay, well.
You know, I'm just concerned-
You know what they say about opinions.
You know, I'm just concerned about it not fitting in Monroe.
I understand. That's your opinion, and you're entitled to it.
But I'm on the commission here, so I have an opinion that's really important.
I understand that, ma'am.
All right, before we make a motion, do we have any, any questions from the public? All right, so we need to word, do we, do we have any? No?
So the color, I have one.
Yeah. Only dealing with the signage, because we don't have a say in the color. All right, so we need to re, Laura, we need to reword the motion, is that correct?
Yes, to include that the breakfast, coffee, and donuts will be on the windows.
Okay, all right. Do we have a motion? And we're going to need, whoever makes the motion is going to need to reword, to word the motion so that the, so that the breakfast, coffee, and donuts is on the, on the windows. Do we have a motion?
Okay, I motion, um, that the Nedza stays on the building up top, but the breakfast, coffee, donuts is moved down to the windows. Bottom of the windows.
Sounds good.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion made by Laura and a second by Fay. All in favor? All right.
All right, thank you guys so much. Y'all have a great evening.
Thank you very much. Motion, motion is carried. All right. Do we have any new business? No? No new business? All right.
Other than those four items you just turned.
Huh?
Other than there's four items you just turned.
Oh, yeah. I, I went right through it, didn't I? I just went straight through. All right, well, this concludes the HPC meeting of June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two.
We just need a motion to adjourn.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
All right, do we have a second? All right, this concludes the HPC meeting of June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. We are adjourned.